Mr. Bailey?
He is on.
Okay, well, we'll go ahead and thank you, Mr. Bailey. We'll come back from our recess at ten to eleven. And we've got a variety of things to go over with you. Our ten forty county property purchase request, Clayne Brant is not present, so we're gonna move on past that. We've got Kevin here, and I'd like him to move up to the front here. And we'll just kinda go down through these different items with you here, Mr. Bailey. So, we'll start with... Kevin, have you got a copy of this? Just start with the first one, the pavement quality indicator.
Okay. Purchase of the pavement quality indicator for be utilized to ensure that the hot mix and material based on initially, especially these grant jobs, Dog Lake, that this material is installed correctly. It's a density gauge that monitors temperature, density, and moisture. And it allows for the quantities, not to get too specific, but out of a job mix formula, hot mix, it ensures that when we lay it down and install it, that we're doing it correctly to get as much longevity out of it as possible.
You know, Kevin, just a thought, and I hadn't mentioned this until you sort of hit me, is if it's allowable, maybe this machine can be used as part of your hot source to match for the pedal.
Yeah, and I can entertain that.
Yeah, just a thought. But you've obviously already thought of it.
Yeah, yeah, we did talk about that a little bit. It'll...this unit tool, whatever you wanna, however you wanna term it, we call it tool, this is much needed item to ensure that the money that we're spending gets installed on the road as optimally as possible.
I move to approve the purchase of the, what's it called? Pavement quality indicator, model three eighty, as presented.
Sorry? It's been moved in segment two to approve the purchase of the pavement quality indicator, model three eighty, as presented. Any other discussion?
Their funds, but you can't vote for their funds.
Now, their capital purchase.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, the crack ceiling, crack ceiling machine purchase.
New crack.
What's that?
The new machine.
Yep, new machine. The purchase of the new crack ceiling machine, purchase under rule number nine, was corrected from yesterday, so you should have that in front of you. And it's a larger pedal, holds two hundred and fifty gallons of material. It replaces an older model. It'll save on repair costs. This unit also has much-needed additional safety features, automatic shut-off for temperature, splash proof lids, and a conveyor for loading. Kind of minimizes the risk to our personnel. This oil is very hot, so this unit will enhance the safety aspect of the corn crack ceiling machine.
Mr. Bailey, any...
Yeah.
Any comments on this with us using rule nine?
No, we actually discussed this earlier this morning. It's the appropriate way to go, and given the exigencies of the circumstances, the appropriate way to go.
Okay, thank you.
I'll move to approve the purchase of the crack ceiling machine. Under rule nine, Kevin has documentation where he went out and did other quotes, I believe, or other check to other places to prove they're able.
This is under contract.
This comes under contract.
Yes.
This crack ceiling machine comes under contract.
Okay, that's correct.
Yeah, contract price.
So, I've moved to approve, total cost forty-eight thousand seven hundred and seventy-seven dollars.
Yeah.
It's been moved in segment to approve the purchase of the new crack ceiling machine in the amount of forty-eight thousand seven seventy-seven, as presented. Other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. So, we'll talk about the road department shoulder-in machine.
This item was added today, is somewhat time-sensitive. It is for the purchase of a Midland shoulder machine. Road Department is in favor due to cost savings over the cost of a new machine. This would be a used machine. Cost savings in material, and also the grant work that will be... Road Department will be working on in the next several years. Part of our matches are installing shoulders, and through specifications of following spec book on doing so, this machine is necessary.
And we have not had one previously?
No, previously, it was a different process to install shoulders, and this machine will minimize the material we use. It'll enhance the compactability of the shoulder, so it'll be compacted as well. And...
That's a safety aspect also.
Yeah, and it keeps the, it keeps the surface, the material that goes on the shoulder here never touches the surface, so we minimize all of the risk of the current process of placing shoulders. So, yeah, I agree.
I'm like putting it on the edge of the road. You mentioned, and you just talked about it, because that's really been one of my pet peeves throughout our road system, not the county, but just in general, throughout the county and state roads. The, your experiment with a small machine, you've used these for many years in your passport, like out of clush, and you indicated that setup, like...
Yeah.
I don't know if you said seen it, but really hard.
Yeah, yeah. The, we did actually rent a similar machine to this to install shoulders on the Heart Rock, or Heart Mountain project, because I wanted to show the road department guys a different avenue for completing work. I wanted to minimize the material that we put on there and actually to back the road shoulder up. But also, we were able to install it and compact it at the same time, which that road especially has a lot of cattle traffic, always walking down the shoulders. And actually, I was just out there yesterday. We're additionally doing some more shoulders on further out, but the shoulders that we placed in November still look like they did when we put them in. You can drive on them, you can see where larger trucks have driven on, but it doesn't... This type of machine, when the aggregate is, I guess, mixed with the right moisture and installed correctly, I think the shoulders will last much, much longer, naturally, saving the money.
Yeah, we do have quite a bit of livestock useful in this.
A lot of livestock in just foot traffic, but also livestock trailers getting off on the, you know, that's on the town.
Well, someone pulling off of the, we talked about, when you pull off on a shoulder and you're actually sinking, it's more hazardous to run off of than pave surface.
Yeah.
That's, that's a real plus, to have these shoulders good and solid.
Yeah.
And you mentioned with the, with the right amount of moisture. Is there aspect of the machine that... Or gauges?
No, this machine doesn't gauge the moisture. That's our, that's our kind of mixing process or application prior to, just to ensure that once it goes across the belt and is struck off at the right elevation, that we can compact it. Moisture in aggregate just enhances the compactability, the density of it, if you will.
There's so many factors. This is very positive, you know, you heard most of them there, you know, from safety to... One thing I really like is the road surface itself not having any damage, but on top of that is the amount of material it takes to shoulder. This is much more efficient instead of them some off by ways. So, this is a real positive. I'm gonna make a motion to purchase this machine under rule nine, contingent upon Kevin's inspection of the machine, and it being in the condition that he wants to accept at the road department.
Sorry. It's been moved in segment to approve the purchase, given the conditions that Commissioner Lawrence just stated under rule nine of this new shoulder-in machine. Discussion?
And also help protect the edge of the pavement.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Most of, this machine, I believe, going forward is gonna be quite an asset to the county. The hardest part of the road to work on, and the most expensive part of the road to work on is the outside three feet. So, when shoulders are low, that's what breaks off in that. In, in long-term planning of what I hope to accomplish, this machine will minimize that, or my hopes are to eliminate all those maintenance costs.
Well, and there's an option, Kevin, or I either meant one, you didn't mention, that comes with this machine, is you're able to shoulder way out there. It comes with an attachment if we decide we need to make a six-foot shoulder all the way out.
It's very versatile.
So, it, you know, as we change to bike paths, walking paths, or whatever we might consider in the next twenty years, this machine could be quite an asset that way.
Well, Commissioner, you're making a great point. We chatted about that last week as well. Didn't talk about the capacity specifically of this machine, but the fact of the matter is, most of our county roads don't have any place to pull off somewhat safely, unless somebody is behind, we have some roads that have high use, big trucks, et cetera. So, I'm sure we'll find some opportunities to expand shoulders or make pull-offs.
It's a great tool.
Yeah.
I even ran it to the state.
Yeah. So, Mr. Bailey, you reviewed this?
Yeah, it's really the same situation as the crack ceiling machine purchase. Both the circumstances and the rule nine exemption are appropriate here.
Thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries.
Good work, Kevin, and your crew.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Thanks, Kevin. So, what would everyone want, what's the most appropriate to get into? I know we need to get Dave in for the way of necessity discussion, but we've got a lot of other things here. What's your pleasure, gentlemen?
I'm good with this going right on down the list.
Okay, nuisance ordinance discussion focused on hearing dates as well?
No, I had to have...
Mr. Bailey, we talked in work session yesterday, the working group, or subcommittee, whatever you wanna talk, or say, reported back to the Board of Commissioners on our draft ordinance amendments. The Board of Commissioners are ready to go forward with the public process to amend the ordinances that are proposed. So, for today, we wanted guidance, guidance from you of the process to build, amend those ordinances.
Amendment of any ordinance follows the same procedure as enacting an ordinance. So, you would have two public hearings, or opportunities for the public to make a comment, separated by no less than thirteen days, and the appropriate notices posted in the newspaper and at the courthouse.
Okay, so, so we just need to set those notice and set those hearing dates, have Denise do that, and then we...
After a...
Second hearing, we can either accept amendments, change the amendment sum, and accept it as an ordinance, an amended ordinance?
Correct.
You can adopt it as an amendment to the ordinance as presented at the second meeting. If you, based on the comments that you hear from the public at the meeting, want to change the ord, change what's proposed, then you're going to have to notify the public of that, unless it's just a scrimsious change. If they did substitute, then we've gotta start the process over.
Okay.
Also, Commissioner, you said ordinance, with the S on the end?
I was gonna correct, it's ordinance.
I was waiting for the list.
You're on the list, dude.
Mr. Bailey, how will that work since our previous ordinance didn't have a number? Does it matter? It wasn't a number, but...
Oh, really?
Yeah.
That, that's an interesting system we had once upon a time.
Yeah.
That's created.
It now does have, our proposed one does have a number, but previous, there was no...
Okay, yeah, we'll just use the number that we are having for the amendment, and since it's being called, since it's clear that it's amendment anyway, I don't think that'll be a problem.
Okay.
You can just identify it as amendment to the county nuisance ordinance.
Well, sets that state.
So, Mr. Bailey, you described the process from the first hearing to the second. It has to be at least thirteen days between those two hearings. How much advance time do we need for notification in newspapers prior to the first meeting?
We have to have notice at least a week in advance. And then we, this always ends up being a, a practical issue for us based on the publication sequence of the bulletin, which is what we use. So, I think it ends up being that we give two weeks advance, two weeks notice of it anyway, but...
And just location to examine or not the bulletin?
The first, so the first paper that would go out in, that I could get it in, is the eighth? So, we could do our first hearing on the fifteenth? Is that true?
I'm glad we be absolutely sure.
Other timeframe, if we have to give a little extra...
Yeah, I'll just have you work with General.
Okay, you don't want it instead? In the today, I thought that's what we were doing, so...
Yeah, I thought we worked you, but that day works just as well. From here, if you would, and set those dates, notify us in the paper.
Well, the one thing to consider, though, if we're gonna have, if we wanted to make the Christmas Valley meeting so that people in Christmas Valley don't have to travel, then it does get trying to make a timeframe.
Which...
When is our meeting in Christmas Valley?
Is it the first Wednesday?
Actually, the first, okay.
Of March.
March one.
March one, so the fifteenth, if we can do that, works perfect, because then we have the two weeks prior to the first of March up there. Or we can do the first of March for the first meeting, and then in the middle of March, do the second here. Why don't you work that out?
Okay.
I was just gonna say, make that happen so we can get to Christmas Valley meeting.
Okay.
Okay?
Yeah, we only need one week's notice.
Okay.
Okay.
Have the date that is published.
So, well, our next, next item is...
So, I guess consensus of the board to move forward, we just have to reset those. We don't have to have a motion to start the process for amendment.
Yeah, this is fine.
Okay.
Okay.
That's right.
That's quite all right. Public health thing, at least you were gonna present that.
Yeah, Beth is a little tied up this morning. So, what this is, is she has received a grant for her immunization program, and what it is, is for a lock on her immunization cabinet. That's what she's been using the grant for.
It's basically to safeguard and ensure the quality of the installation.
That is correct.
I don't see no signature page or anything like that, or memo, at least a copy I have.
I don't have any.
You probably have the original or something.
No, I don't see one either. I will have to ask her that question usually, she signs on those, but I will check that with her.
So, I'll move to approve the two thousand seventeen Immunize Oregon Award, as presented.
Sorry. Okay, it's been moved in segment two to approve the immunization Oregon Award, two thousand seventeen, and not to exceed four thousand dollars, as presented. It does talk about, just for the record, it talks about other upgrades, and it shows them back here that they're gonna do with this, besides the upgrade storage for the frozen vaccine, upgrade circuits in Lakeview, clinic office, to provide stability for the vaccine storage, provide alarm system for the vaccine storage containers to notify personnel. And any funding remaining of the grant would be used to train the immunization program. So, with that said, any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Right-of-way easement change, I'm gonna jump to that.
Yeah. Okay, so yesterday, we received a request from Obsidian Renewables on a right-of-way easement that we actually approved last April. You'll see a copy of the original map and another updated map. They are just changing how they want that easement to run. It was gonna run with a jog, and now it's just gonna run straight where platted land for Riverba Avenue is, across a piece of property currently owned by the county. It was a tax work closure property. But instead of a flint jockey, just go straight across.
No, you said Obsidian.
Did I lie?
I think it's Oregon, or just...
Probably is Oregon, sorry about that.
It's a property out on Missouri and Rabbit Hill. And when they came to us at a previous time, we tried to get them to go straight across that piece of property, but that piece of property had some, they didn't have all the research done to make sure they know the county government exists on it.
Well, I think, I think, again, the power lines are already built, and it has wire on the power poles, and it's coming through for different easements. Where to hold a posse, you could get pretty substantial amount, like, I'm just...
Have a front fantasy.
I...
Just cleaning up something.
Yeah, I was just cleaning it up. I, I, I wasn't able to, Darwin, that's on the home this morning, and I, I couldn't find the piece of property that the county may get on the proposal list for this next year. It must be one law, but I couldn't find it on, or it's listed on here.
That property out there has this odd smittle of county property separating to the north and to the south, and it's a fairy and myth. But it just get, what it does is to allow a power line to go over the property.
Yeah.
Not a big one.
You're right, I remember now, it's that funny piece.
Yeah, so I talked about this light, and again, yes, about that light, yeah.
So, move to approve the right-of-way easement, as presented.
Second? It's been moved in segment two to approve the right-of-way easement clarification change, as presented. Any other discussion?
The Pacific Corps is one of the grantee's two. Yeah, they'll be there by the way.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. We're gonna need... We're gonna need Dave to come with Denise if we can.
Okay.
If you happen to see him on your way, if she can give us a department update, I think.
Sure.
She would be glad to have Dave. So, Mr. Bailey, how much snow did you have?
We had a little over an inch, maybe inch and a half overnight, and it continued to snow all morning long.
Full sunshine down here. If you could've, if you could've slipped and slid to Paisley, you'd have been on bare pavement all the way in.
You know, that's usually the way it is. And like I said, if, you know, from here to Fort Rock would be the dicey part after that, if it's just a fun to drive, you know.
Well, the overnight low in Paisley was, I think, fifty-two, and it's currently, it's currently up to sixty-five right now.
We call it the banana hill.
And rain, my wife, she's planting her garden as we speed.
Yeah.
And that's warm season veggies, not cool season veggies.
I've been waiting for that, I haven't seen that he has a greenhouse.
But he's not saying what he's grown out of.
The duck, yeah, a little...
He is, you know, the incorporated city of Paisley, who decided not to hop out.
That's right.
It's your day in the fishbowl.
At my, I urge them not to hop out.
Well, we was talking about...
You can be safe here, Dan, I got some department updates.
We was talking about retirement funds and everything, or they're always gonna have a second business on the site.
That's right. So, again, yeah, we're also waiting for Dave, so why don't you go ahead and give us some of the department updates?
Really, Dave, go back.
No, Dave, no.
Okay, so...
No?
Oregon.
No?
I have...
He's called me slide.
Oh, no, Dave Knowles.
Oh, Dave Knowles.
This day will be in for executive, I believe.
We are going into executive, later on, I think, to discuss potential innovation.
Okay. We'll call you if we need one.
Okay, we'll call you.
The other day.
So, I have a couple things on a department update of note. The first is, we do have a budget committee position that's open. It's advertised in the paper today, and then also next week. I just encourage you to keep talking with people about it, explaining the position. Again, the requirements on that budget committee person are about two days of meetings, but then staying in contact throughout the year as information comes through that might change our budget or finances. So, I, I would encourage people that are interested to submit a letter of interest, either through email or just in letter form, mail it to us. I think it's a great way for people to understand county services that we provide and how they're funded, and then some of the requirements that come along with that funding, kind of some of the restrictions that our funding has as well. So, it's a lot to take in, but I think it's a great way for people to gain some understanding and knowledge about county services.
Did we have one, not to mention names, show interest in?
We did get one letter of interest already, and so that's great news.
Is there a page or voting, restoration or anything of that criteria proposed this year?
Maybe via Lake County Registered Voter. So, that's the rate.
I think you get a plan so much.
Okay.
He's a master.
So, I wanted to put that out there, you know, any, any way we get the news out that we have a building, the better. The second item of interest, I guess, for our, my department, I went through the investment policy review process with the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. I have a draft letter in front of me that each of you will get a copy of as well. They're mailing it today. It was a great process to go through as far as looking at our investment policy and making sure it meets the state standards and requirements for safeguarding funds for the process involved with people and the authorities, the statutes and things like that. So, just giving you a real quick, brief overview, you'll see a letter on your desks here shortly, and then we will go through the meeting process of adopting that policy with suggested changes from the Oregon Short Term Fund Board. So, just a quick, a quick overview of what happens.
And that short-term, that essentially, what, that kind of used for?
No, the Oregon Short Term Fund Board actually oversees the local government investment pool, which has been in existence for decades. There's an intermediate fund that was just implemented July first. That is part of the reason we updated the investment policy, so we can allow for investing in that fund if we choose to. That was one of the impetus for doing our policy revision.
Well, on that fund, as we've talked before, hasn't probably convinced you that's the way to go yet?
No, I, I don't feel comfortable with the intermediate funds for two reasons. The first reason is, right now, the bond market doesn't look great at all. So, that's, that's number one reason to be concerned. But the second reason, and almost just as important, is the way they structured that fund. It's a, it's not paying investment returns monthly or even yearly. It's all based on your market price of your share. The accounting of it looks a little bit cumbersome, especially for our cash-based system. We can, we can do it, I mean, obviously, there's ways to work through that. But the nature of our investment returns right now, we're providing investment in... we're providing investment and interest returns to all of our funds monthly. So this new investment tool wouldn't provide them. And so I think getting through that discussion and talking about what that looks like will take some time if we choose to go down that road.
I would have summarized it, and just from a person that knows, you know, the markets that well, or this or that from our discussions, is higher risk and a lot of uncertainty.
With the higher risk, you wanted to see a higher rate of return. Not quite there, and uncertain beyond just the process.
Yeah, well, where they don't pay, I mean, you're not there, and you've got your share of value, and... Yeah.
Yeah. They are hopeful that as they've been in this market for a period of time and understand the interest across the state, the intermediate fund, which is handled by the Oregon Investment Council at the State Treasurer's Office. They're hopeful that over time, they might be able to provide a structure very similar to the overnight investment pool that we're in, where we would see cash returns some way, whether it's annually, monthly, something. But they're not, they have not implemented that yet.
But you come to us and say you're comfortable with this, that's when I'll go down there and check it out.
Well, I am not comfortable with it yet, so you don't have to worry about it for a while.
Well, that's part of your duty is, or... Are you done? There was one thing you didn't mention.
I'm not ready to dance out of here, Dan.
Well, the twenty-seventh, is there an opportunity for employees or department heads on budget training or something?
Oh, yes, we can advertise that too. February twenty-eighth, the Department of Revenue will be here to provide their local budget law training. I believe it's scheduled to be held in this room.
So we need to have a little conversation on that, because when I let them schedule that, I have my new calendar that showed we were actually scheduled for work session that day, so I don't know if...
Would that sit Tuesday before the first Wednesday?
That is correct, so I kinda goofed up on scheduling, so I don't know if we wanna move them to Memorial Hall or just wanna hold out.
Well, the regular board meeting that week is in Christmas Valley, so we might as well go at least Paisley for the work session.
Sure. Whatever you wanna do.
I would need to see it, yeah.
Well, they're on the scheduling, it depends on what our agenda is. Or we might not have a work session if appropriate. It depends on how... That's if they ever keep the agenda.
And I'm guessing, and with this budget training, it's much more advantageous to have some nice tables set out, set against. So I think downstairs, you said there's no conflict downstairs?
No, correct.